2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'd like to report that unanimously, the school committee voted to sustain the grievance filed by the Wensocket Teachers Guild. Now, would you please join me in standing for the moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On our agenda this evening, we were going to have the Governor Pothier Elementary Student Presentation, but they're going to do this sometime in May because they're going to combine not only the Pothier School, but with Citizens. So, the whole campus will be presenting to us in May. Now, I'll invite anyone who wants to address the school committee to please come to the podium. State your name, your address. We ask you to keep your comments sort of short and to keep them in good taste.
Robert Stewart, Wensocket Teachers Guild President. On March 22nd, 2022, I addressed a letter to the school committee regarding a school altercations policy because the educators are confused as to what to do. And I haven't received a response yet from this body. And I didn't know if there was going to be a response.
Thank you.
Is there a response or?
Typically, what we're here to do is to listen to the public, to speak to us. And we will take this under advisement. For us, this is not a time where we go back and forth, Mr. Stewart. But thank you for reminding us of that letter. Thank you. Anyone else? Next. Next, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. The mouse is dead, I think, again. Do we have a director of operations somewhere? Anywhere?
Tell them it comes with a built-in mouse.
Maybe Mr. Perrier's mouse could work. Mr. Chairman, I.
I don't know. Did we get these from the lowest bidder?
I'm sure that, yes.
You gotta take Al's.
Dr. McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While the mouse is being replaced, I'm gonna start my announcements and recognitions. First, I am very pleased to introduce Mr. Marc Lebasier as interim assistant principal for the Pothier Citizens Elementary Campus. Mr. Lebasier comes to us with 18 years of experience in public education. He holds a Masters of Education in Administration from Providence College and a Bachelor's of Science in Physical Education. Recently, he completed his administrative internship with North Smithfield Elementary School. He is highly qualified and certified by RIDE as a building-level administrator. Mr. Lebasier comes to us most recently from the North Smithfield School Department, where he served as the district's mentor, program coordinator, and health physical education teacher, as well as adaptive physical education teacher. In his role as mentor, program coordinator, he was responsible for providing each new teacher with a district mentor and leading them through the beginning stages of their careers. While completing his administrative internship, he led the hiring process of a new art teacher, became the Survey Works Site Coordinator, and served as a member of the Rhode Island Department of Education's Health Framework Advisory Group. Moreover, he was able to assume the duties of the assistant principal position while their assistant principal was on leave. Based on his record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mr. Lebasier for the position of interim assistant principal for the Pothier Citizens Elementary Campus. And Mr. Lebasier is here with us this evening. So, I want to congratulate Marc. And Marc's already started. And it's been, I'm sure, a whirlwind couple of weeks. Secondly, every year, all Wensocket 5th graders visit the Museum of Work and Culture to learn about the city's history as a home for immigrants and laborers. The program starts with a hands-on activity discussing immigration to the community, splitting the class into two groups and letting them each go through a suitcase filled with items. The students are tasked with identifying information about the family, such as whether they had children, brought a lot of money with them, what they may have done for work, and what their religion was, based on the items found in the suitcase. The hands-on activities are followed by a museum tour. As part of the greater program, the museum gives each school the correct-size art template for students to work on. And then, the schools return the finished artwork to the museum. From April 19th through May 31st, the Wensocket Proud artwork will be displayed on exhibit in the Museum of Work and Culture for the public to visit. Museum of Work and Culture Director Anne Conway is both enthusiastic and proud of how far the Wensocket Proud civic program has come over the past 14 years. On March 24th, Senators Melissa Murray and Roger Pickard presented a $2,000 legislative grant in continued support of the Wensocket Proud program. This money helps fund the cost of bringing Wensocket students to the Museum of Work and Culture for activities and tours. In years past, the school would have to pay for the field trip programming. But with these funds, the museum is able to offer their educational programming to students in Wensocket for free. The Wensocket Rotary Club and the Wensocket Education Department have partnered to ensure that children have birthday celebrations regardless of their living circumstances. Nicole Brien, president of the Rotary Club, said the Rotary in Smithfield had a similar program and brought this program here to Wensocket. Kim Blaze, our executive secretary, identifies the students and families who may not, for one circumstance or another, realistically be able to celebrate their birthday with a party due to either foster care, homelessness, or identified as financially disadvantaged. The birthday in a bag includes a present for the child, a voucher for two large pizzas from Park Avenue Pizza, streamers, cutlery, a tablecloth, juice boxes, snacks, and sometimes a party game. Because of school privacy guidelines, the Rotary does not know who the families are. So, when they purchase the cake, they purchase a tube of icing for the parents to inscribe the child's name on it themselves. Although the program began with just elementary students, the Rotary has recently expanded this program to the secondary level as well. This program began at the end of last school year, and it was very well-received. We have at least one birthday a week and sometimes even more. Since the program began, we've distributed 34 bags total with no signs of stopping. And I want to thank Kimberly Blaze here for her amazing work and dedication to the families here in Wensocket. Our offices are right next to one another. And she always comes in very excited when a parent is ready to come and pick up the cake and the bag of goodies. So, I want to thank you, Kim, for a wonderful job. The Wensocket High School's production of "The Addams Family", led by teacher Jennifer Maello, was held on April 7th, 8th, and 9th. Ms. Maello stated that coming back from the pandemic put her drama program back at square one. While students auditioned for leads, anyone who wanted to enroll in the drama class was more than welcome. In total, there were 24 students. 28 alumni also performed going back as far as 2002. And three staff members performed onstage as well. Despite the initial difficulties finding students to perform, Ms. Maello said the most challenging part of this production was working with and around COVID. They dealt with quarantine, close contacts, and kids getting sick. They also had to help with boosting student confidence after sitting inside for years and helped them with their confidence to overcome the anxiety of people seeing them perform, which she pointed out was an often overlooked consequence of the pandemic. After all these obstacles, these students, as well as their teacher, had to overcome. The show went on with great success. The Wensocket Education Department is proud of these and their teachers for all the obstacles they have had to overcome to make this performance an amazing one at best. So, congratulations to all the amazing students, staff, and members of the community. I was able to attend on Friday night. And it was like Broadway was back to Wensocket. So, again, I want to thank Jen Maello and her amazing students, teachers, and the alum that also performed. We're very pleased to announce Ms. Jennifer Polacek, science teacher at Hamlet Middle School, was selected to participate in the National STEM Scholar Program. This program works to inspire the creativity and passion of middle-school science teachers. Only 10 teachers across the country were selected for this prestigious program. Mrs. Polacek will be working with the Gattan Academy of Mathematics and Science, as well as the Center for Gifted Studies from May 29th through June 4th, 2022, at Western Kentucky University in Bowling Green, Kentucky. Mrs. Polacek will engage in hands-on, minds-on science activities, connect with speakers and thought leaders in STEM education, learn with skilled science educators, and develop a creative challenge project for classroom implementation. She will receive a Chromebook and funding for challenge project supplies and materials. National STEM scholars will share midpoint progress with their colleagues while attending the National Science Teachers Association annual meeting in April of 2023. Mentoring will be provided throughout the year by the Western Kentucky University faculty in addition. So, I want to congratulate Jennifer Polacek, science teacher at Hamlet Middle School. Last, but certainly not least, recently, the Wensocket High School received the Gianna Sorrella Memorial Sportsmanship Award. This award was presented to an athletic team showing conduct considered fitting for a sports team, including fair play and respect for others. I am very proud to recognize the Lady Novans soccer team for this prestigious award. Coach Tiffany Godbout stated, "Although our record may say different, the 2021-22 Lady Novans soccer season was one to remember." "This season started out differently than most, moving up a division, no assistant coach, and their head coach in an injury boot." "Even with these challenges, this year's group of girls persevered through it all. Each game, no matter the score, they kept their attitudes positive and played their hardest until the last second of every game. The sportsmanship was greater than any other year we've played, and I can't wait to see it again next season." "I couldn't be more proud to coach such a wonderful group of girls. So, I want to congratulate the Lady Novans soccer team, some of which are here this evening. Congratulations, ladies." I have here some certificates that were created by the Wensocket Education Department that I'd like to hand out to the ladies that are here this evening. I'm gonna start off with head coach Tiffany Godbout.
She's the last one.
She's the last one. There you go. Would you? That'd be great. Fantastic. Great.
Someone order up with the sheet. I don't know if that helps.
Rose on the bottom, right?
Always on the bottom.
Sure.
You want to take the rest, right?
Yeah. Take this off here. I know I'm kind of tethered, so I've got to be careful. First, I'm gonna recognize Peyton Laverdiere. Come on up, Peyton. Caitlin Marko.
Thank you.
Amber Theryan. That concludes my recognitions and announcements. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I also want to add my congratulations to our new assistant principal, to our soccer team, to Ms. Polacek, and especially the Addams Family production family. I went, my wife and I went Saturday. And I'm sure, I mean, the house was full. Dr. Holt was there. And it was exciting. And like you said, Dr. McGee, Broadway came back to Wensocket. It was a funny presentation. It was fabulous. It's incredible. There were nearly 50 people onstage. There were either the main actors, the characters, and all the additional folks that performed. It was incredible to see students, alumni, staff, all just working so well together in this presentation. It must have taken an incredible amount of work. And I've seen this show on Broadway. Our production was a lot better. So, that's the way I look at it. Is there anyone else that wants to address recognition and announcements? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the March 23rd, 2022 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. End of, in the, I'd like to pull out just a couple of purchases. Mr. Perrier, you and I discussed the tube, the tunnel that will be constructed at Citizens. I'd like you to discuss that a bit. And also, the increasing costs to the HVAC systems at Villanova and Hamlet. It seems like those schools are competing against one another to have the highest amount of costs on HVACs. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I also jump in too?
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to ask, on this particular list, 80% deal with emergency repairs. The timing and everything just went like right now? I mean, I don't disagree with them, but just.
So, I'll address first the HVAC questions. So, much of this has been deferred due to COVID in terms of making repairs based on the fact we couldn't get parts in and whatnot. And now that we're back into the full swing and as parts have arrived, they've had to come out and just make all of these repairs to get the systems up and running. As the committee is aware, based on our discussions about our capital planning, that there are many needs in the district. And I think, while I was not here when this school was built, I think many of the individuals that are here in the district to this day recall that this system, as I've been told, has never worked properly from the beginning. So, oftentimes, I also feel like we're dumping a lot of money into this HVAC system that needs to be replaced. And we've kind of alluded to it and discussed it over the last few years prior to the pandemic. And then, the pandemic has shifted our focus. But now that things are returning back to "normal", quote-unquote, we need to take a hard look at our HVAC systems here at the middle schools through the capital planning process or by whatever means. Because this system was like this prior to the pandemic. You may recall, we used to joke when the committee sat down here that either it was too hot or too cold. And literally, we'd have somebody manually go up and adjust the temperatures before the school committee meetings. So, it's something that's, I don't think, a short-term fix. It's a long-term fix. But in the meantime, with students and staff in the buildings, these are the kinds of things that we're repairing quite often. And some of these things aren't just here. You're gonna see them at our high school, which has an HVAC system. The focus seems to be here, and rightly so, because it's newer than the high school systems. However, both systems need to be replaced. And that's something I think that we're only gonna be able to truly fund and truly remedy through capital funding versus trying to fund it out of our operating budget. So, many things have broken down. You're gonna see on there that they did not get to the filters. But, you know, in trying to reopen the buildings, and not to get away from the conversation, but we're reopening the water fountains. And we rushed around to get those all open. And any fixes, we're trying to get those fixed right away and get those operational. We have the water department. I'm waiting for confirmation from the test of the water next week. But these are all things that we're trying to bring online as rapidly as possible. And we do not have an HVAC person on staff any longer. We used to have a person that was like our quote-unquote boiler slash HVAC person. They weren't truly certified in HVAC. They took care of it. However, we posted that position multiple times, and we're not able to fill it. So, we hired somebody without that skill set because that person, aside from doing HVAC, did other things, and we were short-staffed. So, what we can do in-house, we do with the staffing that we have. And you'll see in my report later on, we still have multiple vacancies through open positions and people that are out on different types of leaves, if you will. So, oftentimes, we get stuck calling this HVAC company to come and make some of these repairs. If we get fully staffed, I'm hoping some of these things we can do in-house. But ultimately, we're gonna need to look at the HVAC systems here at the middle schools, in the high school, and the Createc Center. We did clean it. We did kind of refurbish some of it when we did the work there a few years ago. But that's also a system that's gonna need to be looked at in addition to looking at new elementary schools. So.
Mr. Burke's comment question on "everything seems to be an emergency", we had discussed that. I don't know if it's not an emergency, you should just mention repair. I guess that's what you're coming.
No, I just, I just, it just, this was just, 80% of it was emergency repair.
Right.
But I understand your answer did explain it.
So, I guess what I would say is as many of these repairs as the warmer weather is getting here, we're trying to get them in as quickly as possible to repair it. It becomes very uncomfortable in the classrooms, and that impedes learning. So, we deem it to have it fixed right away. And in terms of the water at Citizens, or the.
The tunnel.
The piping. So, under the Citizens, when I assumed responsibility for facilities in the district, I was made aware of the fact that the piping was.
Don't worry, come back.
Was older. And we had made some minor repairs. But at this point in time, it's corroded to the point where we're gonna need to address it because the plumbers are unwilling. And again, we don't have a plumber on staff anymore. We have to contract with plumbers, again, usually on an emergency basis. And the plumbers will come in. But we got into the point where they will not, they will not come in and touch those water lines. And that is domestic water. It feeds, it feeds the water fountains and the sinks, and the bathrooms. And unfortunately, again, I know we're through, working at a capital process. And it may seem like, why do we have to invest that large amount of money into something that we may potentially replace depending upon how planning works out? It's something we're going to need to do because if the water line fails under there, you'll have potentially no domestic water, and you will have to shut the school down completely. So, my understanding, based on talking to our facility supervisor, Mr. Lazat, and the conversations had with the plumbers, is that now would be the time to do it because the summer's coming up. And we think it'd be prudent to make that repair now versus waiting to where something breaks and then we're reacting. Similar to our HVAC system. There was no maintenance or anything done over the years. And now, we pay the price regularly with how that works.
Sure. Mr. Leclerc.
Back to the HVAC. I mentioned briefly to you, one of the things I found cost-wise was replace filters, $17,000. But $14,000 was labor, just to replace them. Is that something we can look in-house, maybe? I know you mentioned staff shortages, but is that something that's possible?
I certainly think that's a good suggestion that we can certainly look into. I will take that back. We meet weekly with the team, and I will take that back to them and see if that's something that we can discuss. And if there's certain items in here that, when we get to the full staffing, if we can take it on ourselves, we will. And it's something that we can certainly consider. The facilities department has taken a battering due to COVID. We're short-staffed. They went above and beyond. I say it often, they went above and beyond and did many things in the background. And they're well behind on their work orders, and they're well behind on a lot of things because their focus shifted to addressing COVID. But we will certainly incorporate that moving forward, whatever way we can, to reduce costs.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call to approve this consent agenda.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the superintendent report. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will begin, as I usually do, with personnel. So, we have recently added to the district a full-time nurse floater, which, a nurse floater is simply a nurse that floats from school to school and fills in when we have either nurses that are absent or to assist in other, with nurses that are actually at their schools. We also have an occupational therapist for the district in an interim. As we met this evening, Mr. Lebasier, our interim assistant principal at Pothier Citizens. We also have some non-certified positions, some PCAs, which are one-to-one paraprofessionals. We have two custodians and a departmental self-contained teacher assistant as well. Hourly stipend extracurricular positions as the, as the high school is starting to to utilize their credit recovery program, similar to the one they used last year. We have a good number of staff here that are going to be working for that particular credit recovery program at the high school. Secondly, on my report, I can provide a brief RICAS update to the committee. So, I want to first start with the high school. As the committee is aware, the PSAT is given to our students in grade 10. The date of the PSAT is scheduled for April 14th. We have the SAT, which is given to students in grade 11, is given on April 13th. The RICAS, which is given to students in the district from grades 3 through 8. given to students in the district from grades three through eight. The reading RICAS, there's a, first, there's a window that districts have that RIDE establishes to administer the, the assessment. The reading window here in the district is April 8 through the 14th. The makeups are scheduled for April 25 through the 29th. The math RICAS is scheduled for May 16 through May 20. The makeups are May 23 through May 27. We have started the RICAS here this week in the district. We also have our dynamic learning maps, which is the assessment that we provide to all of our students in the district that are in an alternative assessment, alternate assessment classroom. And that window is April 4 through May 27. And then we have the science next generation, a science assessment, which is given to students in grades five, eight, and 11. And that window begins on May 2 and goes through May 6. We will be receiving the results, this year's RICAS results sometime in the fall. Typically, we receive them in November. And I just want to say, aside from the actual dates, you know, as I said, some have already started, that our teachers and staff and administrators have worked very hard this year in preparing students for the RICAS, for the DLM, for the science NGSA as well. They've worked, as I said, they've worked very hard in providing strategies for our students, utilizing things called released items, which the Department of Education provides districts to use, which is basically samples of what students would see on the RICAS. So I'm hopeful that with all of this hard work that's been put in, we're going to see an increase in our proficiency scores this year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Dr. McGee, I remember a couple of years ago, a group of principals looking at the RICAS, they were able to examine and to see where the weaknesses of the students. And I believe then measures curriculum was created to address that.
Right.
Hopefully, we start to see the fruits of that.
I'm hopeful. I know that, you know, we're fortunate with the, the new teachers' contract, which is in its first year that we were able to create alt, which is common planning time, alt time for our elementary staff. So they, I know they've been utilizing that time. Every Wednesday, they meet for an hour in the morning prior to, to the start of the school day. I know they've been working collaboratively in professional learning communities around things like you're, you're mentioning, Mr. Burke, as well as just, you know, preparing and, and really getting their students ready for, for the RICAS, in addition to many other things that they're utilizing that common planning for as well.
Good, good to hear. Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leclerc. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next, I will ask Ms. Kapiskis to give us the CILAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The CILAC met on Thursday, April 7, 2022. Meeting was called to order at 6:03. We had present, two presenters of the meeting, so we took them out of order on the agenda. First presenter was Elizabeth Hubbard, an attorney from disability rights for Allen, DRI. She presented on supported decision-making as an alternative to guardianship. She provided a PowerPoint of her presentation, which was shared with the email list of members in advance. She also advised that a sample agreement is provided on DRI's website and that she would provide information to me so that I could share it out to anybody who was interested. And you can contact me via my email, kapiski, K-A-P-I-S-K-I, at hotmail.com. The second presenter was Linda Brunetti, mother to Adam Brunetti, our production person for Adam's family, who spoke on behalf of the Autism Project. She detailed many of the project's offerings, many of which are covered by Medicaid. This includes a specialized summer camp, parent information series, and social skills groups. For more information, please visit their website at autismproject.org. Under old business, we were reminded that parent support group meetings remain suspended due to COVID and will revisit that decision in September of 2020, when the new school year begins. Under new business, a brief review of the public meeting on the new graduation requirements being proposed by RIDE took place on 4-4 at the Harris Public Library. All who spoke were opposed. I know Dr. McGee was there, Chairman Borger was there, Alan Leclerc was there, and I was there. I don't know if anybody, all Don Morel, there were, Dr. Holt. I don't know who spoke because unfortunately I arrived late because I had to pick my son up at school. But no one spoke in favor. I presented the, the suggestion of CILAC that, and the concerns of CILAC with regard to these proposed amendments. In a superintendent's report, Dr. McGee advised that, that he was at the same meeting as well, and that he and I had also attended a meeting with Steve Osborne from RIDE to discuss those same proposed graduation requirements, pretty much in response to the school committee's resolution opposing them. He advised that he had met with the governor regarding the building committee's plans and was still waiting for a response from the state. He last advised again about the RICAS and the DLM starting and had thanked all for their effort in advance of the upcoming testing and expressed his hope that we all see improvement. This is real advice that she had sent to me to share with the email list, certain professional development opportunities for staff, as well as opportunities for the parent series, which was shared with parents and guardians via my email list. She advised that Mr. Notorianni had reached out to the fire department, again asking them to present, in particular, in our self-contained rooms in full turnout gear so our students would not be so frightened to see a fireman in the event of an emergency. Superintendent asked to speak again and advised that he met with the new director of the Boys and Girls Club in One Socket, trying the new facility with Mr. Notorianni. The new director advised that he will reach out to the district so as to make contact with students with disabilities. And he wants to work with us more, for more inclusivity of these students. School committee member and chair, Paul Borger, advised that he'd also attended the public meeting regarding the graduation requirements on 4-4 and spoke in opposition to those proposed requirements. The meeting was adjourned at 7:20. Those are my notes. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskis. Any questions, comments for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into the technology facilities update. I'll turn over our director operations, Mr. Notorianni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, I will start with the facilities update. Currently, the facilities department is operating with several vacancies, as I alluded to earlier. We still have five openings, whether they're through vacancies or staff that are on various states of leave, which results in the facility staff backfilling in for custodians. Means the buildings get cleaned, but facilities work does lag behind slightly. They have been working on multiple projects and some of them listed below are, they are renovating an office on the basement level at the high school for an assistant principal. They've finished off working at the nurse's office at the high school. That's been renovated. There's a couple more repairs we'll do over the summer. If you, when you're exiting this evening, if you look to the left, they built a student garden here at the middle school as part of an initiative that came out of the student council, the student government here at the middle school, I think was an initiative, Dr. McGee, that
Student government.
Student government. So they've come up with some really great ideas. This is one of them. And you can see it when you walk out. They've completed putting cold molding into the ninth grade academy wing. And they've finished the parking sign project at the high school where we added additional handicap spaces and put out more reserved parking for the, the student vans and trans pro and whatnot. Moving on, the school resource officer program. We continue to meet with them bi-weekly. We had a very robust discussion this past Wednesday, and most of our discussions centered around student behaviors and expectations. And I'd just like to note, when I talk about student behaviors, it's not only some of the more repugnant behaviors, but we also talk about some of the good things going on. You know, the kids joining up with, I think it's ultimate frisbee. I think that's what Officer Velino does here at the middle school. So it's not always bad news we talk about. We got good things going on as well. I always feel like it seems like we're talking about, you know, things that aren't so great. Moving on to technology, both the technology staff and the data staff have been working hard to provide support for the state assessments that Dr. McGee talked about earlier. The technology staff are currently working on producing staff ID FOB cards, and we will send an email to the school committee to incorporate you so you can get an ID identifying you're on the school committee when you go to the school. So you get into the main doors and get to the main office a little quicker. They're working on the RICAS technology setup, and they've started to install display televisions here at Hamlet Middle School. The technology department staff are in the process of reconciling and validating federal and state reporting. They, following data submissions, the March 1 snapshot report, EZIEP, the IELP data upload and textbook collection will either be completed or were completed. I mean, I alluded to at the last meeting, we were just about ready to finish the March 1 snapshot report. That's now complete, and it was error-free. So I'd like to thank all of my colleagues on the admin team. I appreciate you. And Dr. McGee, for your leadership, I appreciate you and your guidance on it. So, so that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni, and we, we appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that.
Any questions, comments for, for our director? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the technology facilities update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the public comment policy for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Is there any further comments regarding this policy?
I don't think so.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments on the parent and family engagement policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mr. Leclerc. In reading this, is it, is it mean it's just a change in dates, basically?
That's correct.
Any comments, further comments on this policy?
That's the only change.
Right. I'm just saying, anyone has, anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskis.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We have nothing else on our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:39 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leclerc and Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Good night.